Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Hall. If everybody can rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Colbert, why don't you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Chief White, will you do the invocation? How are you, Chief? Sounds like it.
Father God, we thank you for the students that are before us today and their families and the accomplishments that they achieved this past year. And, Lord, we pray for their safety and well-being and their endeavors and all that they do. Ask many blessings on them and the schools they attend. Thank you, Lord, for everything that you bestow on this community. We ask for your blessings on all of our workers and safety on day-in, day-out basis. Thank you for our elected officials that are willing to serve. And we pray, Lord, for their wisdom and their decisions for this town. Pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It is approximately 6:35 PM. We have all members of council present this evening. We have two items of business right up front. They're ceremonial items, and they're going to be recognition of some of our great student athletes here in the city of Oviedo from Oviedo High School. Council, why don't you join me down front? And we'll recognize these well-deserving young men and women. Thank you, Drew.
All righty. Well, first, we have the Oviedo High School girls bowling team. These young ladies won a perfect sixteen and oh, and they are back-to-back state champions. I'd like to introduce their coach, Pat Costello. Give them a big round of applause.
Thank you.
This is the second year in a row we've done this?
Yes, sir.
This is awesome.
I like this habit.
I was thinking that's Hall of Famer, Coach Pat, right?
Uh, yes.
Boy, I used to watch when I was a young kid, there's this Hall of Famer, Pat Costello. You might remember those days in seventies when bowling was on TV a lot? You were on, like, every week, you know?
In the seventies? I must have been two. Yeah, those were the good old days. But it's what's wonderful now is I get to bring all that excitement and live it through these high school athletes. So, I'd first of all like to thank all of you for recognizing us, not only for being at a great high school academically, but at a great high school that is academically wonderful and athletically wonderful. We have a grade AD, Coach Chen. We love you. We love your support that you've given us throughout the year. And we can't do it. I have a wonderful group of parents. I have to keep under control, as you all know. It's not the kids I worry about, but they're great and they're wonderful, and I can't do what I do without them or these wonderful athletes. So let me introduce to you the reigning state back-to-back champions, our mighty-mite freshman, Jenna Viles. Come on, Jenna. And our freshman, we've got twins, Annabelle Olley and Fajeska Olley. Another freshman, Jacqueline Gonzalez. And a freshman who came in and really surprised us all because we had a hole we had to fill. We had four bowlers that were pretty dominating, and we needed that fifth one to fill it in, and Justina Nielsen did that job. And we have all conference and highest average, and we're looking forward to a great national championship in June in St. Louis, Missouri. We finished third last year, so we're hoping this year to do a lot better. If we can get this one's back in shape, because she was in a she was in an accident and her back has just been giving her fits, so we're going to get her. She has the highest average in the county, Shawna Rogers. And she's only a junior. I mean, are you a sophomore? See? What do I know?
Steve, she's got a better average than you do.
Uh, pretty much. Oh, sorry, Steve. You were my buddy a minute ago. I think I just lost him, but that's all right. Yeah, she's I forgot she's only a sophomore. All right, my juniors, who are academically outstanding, they're they're just the epitome of what you would like on a team, and a leader to team would be Amelia Vesquez, junior, and Emma Mixka, junior. We have one more young lady who's not here that's on her way, but Lord knows if she'll ever get here. But last year, when she came to the team, she'd never, ever bowled before in her life. She's from South Korea. Got in last year's to the national championship in June and beat everyone on our team in singles and moved up into the, I think, into the twenty bracket in the nation. And this year, filled the spot that was just incredibly wonderful. And her name is Priscilla Chun, and I'd like to have her have a nice round of applause, too. I always say, if they really can't do it, they look good anyway. They look good when they're doing it, no matter what, so.
Oh, they look great. Well, Pat, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ladies. Why don't you come on up front here? We'll get a picture. I'm sure your parents and relatives are here. Everyone can just kind of get up, mingle around, get your best shot. Pat, why don't you center here with your...
Hey, Mama.
Somebody grab Coach's... Let's give these young ladies a big round of applause. Thank you, ladies. Who has homework tonight?
They all do.
You know, there is a cute little story I'd like to tell about the bowling team. You know, our police have a fundraiser each year, and it's a bowling tournament. And two years ago, they let the Oviedo bowlers come in and bowl in the tournament, the kids. And obviously, they just kicked everyone's you-know-what, so. They're banned from now on, so. All righty. Next up. Next up, we have the Oviedo High School boys cross-country. And these guys were the Seminole Athletic Conference champions, district champions, regional championship, and the first Oviedo High School cross-country state champions. Their coach is Dave Tibblets. Dave, come on up and give them a big round of applause. Running injury, is that what happened, training?
He went past me. I know. Had nothing to do with the race.
Coach, why don't you introduce your team for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, for this great honor. I know it's thrilling for me. It's thrilling for our team as well. And also, thank you very much, parents, and especially thank you to our athletic director, Jen Darty. With her support, this season was possible. I'd like to start introducing our team. We were led this year by senior captains Tyson Harper and Ethan Fields. Tyson is going to be attending Stetson on a running scholarship. Tyson Harper, come on up. Another one of our senior captains was Ethan Fields. Ethan is going to be tending Harvard in the fall. Next, we have junior Angel Vicioso. Another one of our leading seniors is Jaden Dotapunini. Jaden had a monster season for us this year, and he's one of the reasons why we're all here today. Our next runner is a guy that I've been running with since sixth grade. I was a volunteer coach at Jackson Heights, and he was one of our outstanding runners there, Zach Metz. And Zach's younger brother is a sophomore this year and part of the varsity squad and part of this state championship team. It's Jeff Metz. And we also have two members of our team that couldn't be with us tonight, but were instrumental to our season this year. And its brothers Camo and Mamouche Galloway, they've got an away basketball game for Oviedo, so they couldn't attend, but thank you very much.
Athletic Director, would you like to come on up and say a few words? They're your kids. Give her a big round of applause.
First off, thank you to City of Oviedo for having us tonight and recognizing the amazing accomplishments of our athletes. We're so proud of our boys' cross-country team and our girls' bowling team out there in the lobby and just the incredible seasons they had this year. We know the future is bright for all of them. Keep up the hard work in the classroom and out on the track and out on the lanes. So thank you so much.
Guys, why don't you come on up front here? They can get a few pictures. Coach, why don't you get in the center here? And parents, just as before, kind of get up and move around, wherever you'd like to be. How'd you do that, Coach? This is a flag football injury, if anyone's interested. Don't worry about it, it's fine. I'm always the shortest guy here. Oh, here come the parents, hang on. Mom and Dad over there didn't dismiss us yet. Guys, congratulations. I'm sure you have homework to do, too. Give them a big round of applause. All righty, that's the end of our ceremonial for tonight. Congratulations, everybody. All righty. Moving along, we're going to go on to the approval of our minutes for January sixteenth, twenty eighteen. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second. We have motion and second. Any discussion?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All righty. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next portion of our meeting, it's the public comment portion of the meeting. It's the public's opportunity to address council on any items that may be on the agenda that do not have public comment or just any item in general. So the first written request that had come up to me tonight, because I did have a couple of them, is first one's from Ernie Langdon. Oh, okay, Ernie, you sure? Take that out. Next one I have is from Megan McCollum. How are you, Megan?
Good, how are you?
We're great. Just need your name and address for the record first, and then we're going to have to say.
My name is Megan McCollum. My address is five four one Farmingham Court, Oviedo. I just first want to start by thanking you all for the new sidewalk from on Lockwood from four nineteen up to four twenty-six. It's gives residents in the area a great way to bike and walk and run safely along Lockwood, which I'm sure you all know could be a little dangerous at times. So on that sidewalk up towards the north end, within probably about a hundred yards of four twenty-six, there are exits on the sidewalks on both sides, but there's no crosswalk there. And so, you know, it's hard for pedestrians to cross there because people don't know to stop. So ideally, what I would love is a flashing light like there is at Evans and Lockwoods, and sometimes, you know, cars may not know people are crossing there. However, I know that costs money, so I would be very happy with a crosswalk just to let people know to stop. Don't hit us when we're trying to run across the road.
That doesn't seem like too big of a request, to be honest. And I saw our public works director back in the corner. Maybe you just see Bobby, because I saw him shaking his head. I think they're aware of it, so maybe if you just have a quick conversation with him, he might have some good news for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down tonight. That is the end of the written requests. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to our consent agenda. Tonight's consent items are items number five through ten on the agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I'd like to pull off item number ten and make it ten A. That's okay.
All righty, I have a motion to approve, removing item ten, making it ten A. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would be interested on perhaps pulling off or just talking more about items number five and eight.
Do you have quick questions on those?
Well, the question on number five is, I never quite got an answer to what the difference was between the two companies that were the top placers. For the people in the audience, this is in regards to hiring a consulting firm to reevaluate what the impact fees should be for the city of Oviedo. One came in thirty thousand dollars higher than the other, and the complete reports weren't included. So I just look at these and think, well, if one does more public meetings to get the impact fees, and they're all supposed to be based on data, if staff has any input that...
Mr. Cobb, do you have a quick answer to that? Because I asked you the same question earlier, and you had a quick answer for me.
Yes, sir. Basically, the difference is, there's a couple of things. One is experience in the preparation of these impact fee technical studies. And then the second one is the comprehensive program that you get with one. The third reason is that the company that's being recommended has performed our last two technical studies, so they know our system. They know they know it well. When I said the comprehensive program, they have internal legal assistance that they bring forward so that anything that they recommend has that legal review before it gets to us. And then secondly is that our code of ordinances requires that we do an annual index. And so they stay with us over the next five years as part of helping us through that annual indexing that we do for each of the each of the impact fees. And so those are the major points for the recommendation. And the other company, though, they are a very qualified company, they had a responsive proposal. However, they the committee, from my understanding, is that the committee just did not see the experience in the preparation of these types of studies as well as the comprehensive program that the recommended firm brings.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Appreciate it. And council member, you pulled off item eight.
On eight, there are some neighbors here in the area that pertains to item eight, which is the paving up of Garden Grove. My understanding from discussions prior to the meeting was that all of the drainage project was completed and that we would not be doing anything in a strange order. Just wanted to make sure that we were going to have completed the drainage, because it sounds like it might not be yet. Or there may be some misunderstanding with what what complete is. So maybe we could just get everybody up to speed on that.
Our public works director will be the arbitrator of that one.
No resurfacing will be started before that drainage project is complete, I can assure you.
Okay.
It may take a few weeks to actually finish the project, but the resurfacing will not start without. We would never do that.
Okay, so it's not if the drainage is not complete yet, so...
It's I believe it's like eighty-five, ninety percent complete.
Okay.
If it's not all the way complete, I'd have to check with staff for an update. I didn't get one today.
Okay, very good.
But it's it's close.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bobby.
If I could ask another question of the city manager. On the impact fee assessment, are we required for the one that did the thirty thousand less, are we able to internally do that study ourselves, or do we have to then would we then have to go hire somebody year after year to do the indexing?
The technicality of the study, we don't have that expertise in-house. And so, yes, you want to go and you want to get these firms that do have the capability or have the expertise in preparing these, because you're dealing with your police, your fire, administrative facilities, your transportation, and your recreation and parks. And so rather than trying to farm that out into various different departments, you really need to bring in a firm that is experienced in preparing these studies.
So is it correct to say that we're allowed to adjust the impact fees every year if we have this level of intensity, like, say, the cost of roads goes up ten percent and not three percent, and the cost of living is maybe three percent? Are we then allowed to raise our road or your transportation impact fee by ten percent if we stick with these guys?
What it what we have to do is our codes require that every five years, we do, we have to adopt a new technical study every five years. In the interim where those years where there isn't a technical study requirement, what our code requires is that we do an indexing of it so that when you get when you get to the end of the five years, there isn't a dramatic change or shouldn't be a dramatic change in the fees themselves. What there are certain indexing formulas that we go that are referred to in the code of ordinances. I'm trying to remember one of them that you're required to go and look at each year. You look at that. We've never really had one that said, okay, a ten-year jump, a ten percent jump in one year. We've never seen that before. Most of the time, they're very minute, you know, the indexing's very minute. So what they do is they verify what the they go and they reevaluate our our fees each year, you know, based on these indexes that's called for in the code of ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All righty, so the motion on the table is to adopt and move ten to ten A. There was a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let me just catch up here to ten. All righty, so item ten is resolution number thirty-five thirty-three dash eighteen, which is purchase of property adjacent to Round Lake Park. Mr. Cobb, why don't you just give us a quick, brief introduction, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Hankins to see if he pulled it off.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to approve a purchase of properties, three lots that are located adjacent to Round Lake Park. You've seen these these properties before, both at your December fourth and your January sixteenth meeting. At your January sixteenth meeting, you authorized us to submit a purchase and sale agreement for an offer of fifty thousand dollars for the three lots. The property owner did accept the city's proposal, and so tonight, we're bringing the purchase and sale contract to you for formal approval. And it's recommended that you adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, Councilman Hankins, you pulled it off.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of things that I want to talk about on this. You know, when this came to us, I think everybody saw that I was not happy the way it came to us. The properties were were listed as pending on every real estate site, but yet a member got some information from somebody that they were available. So I was not comfortable until the public was able to have a an opportunity to buy this, because, you know, we shouldn't be purchasing stuff because somebody heard something. But recently, I'm looking at this, and I find out that, you know, back in November, some members of this body who were running for election at the time got accused of certain things with campaign contributions, whatever. But recently, on this property, where we had inside information, this this agent gave a campaign contribution to one of the members. That totally messes this up for me. First of all, it should have been relisted so the public could have seen it. Now, I'm not saying anything nefarious was going on here. What I am saying is that in the course of campaigns, people make donations. When the mayor and I get accused of it three months ago of absolutely no fault of our own, and then something happens a week ago, this comes from inside information, a donation is made to a campaign that is open. To me, that that I'm not going to say it raises red flags, because I'm sure it was very innocent. The point I'm trying to make is that when we're in campaigns, stuff happens. So I thought that needed to come to light. It should have been it should be disclosed. But anytime you buy something, I think everybody should have an opportunity to look at it, and we shouldn't be purchasing stuff that comes to us because somebody got some inside information. So I'm just throwing that out for you guys to let you know that what I discovered, and this just happened in the last week, I honestly don't think anything anything happened here. This this be innocent business stuff. Stuff happens in here, but to me, it doesn't sit sit right. So I didn't like it when it was first brought to us that, you know, I think the comment was, you know, I heard through the grapevine or something. I don't work on grapevines. I work on 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 stuff that's right and that's transparent and that the citizens can be proud of. Now, not having said that, you know, not to say that this property wouldn't be great for our park system and what have you, but, you know, for me, I'd like to see this, you know, be put back on on the, you know, the MLS or whatever you guys do in real estate and let make sure nobody else wants a shot at this. But the donation kind of raised a little flag to me, and I don't think it's anything bad, but it was concerning. And I did speak to Mr. Cobb and Mr. Groot about it today, and I voiced my concerns about it. So, you know, it's kind of a little stunning, but, you know, it needed to be said, especially in light of three months ago when the mayor and I were crucified of no fault of our own for the same member, you know, making these accusations towards us, which were which they were they were nothing, and I don't think hers is anything. But the point I'm trying to make is stuff happens in in campaigns. So with that, I'll turn it back to you. I'm not going to make a motion on this, but I think it's something that needed to be said.
All righty. How about we'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution thirty-five thirty-three dash eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's second. Anything further, Councilman Pollak?
I'm good with acquiring additional properties. I, you know, the MLS listing thing, it's, you know, it is what it is. It was listed, it was just shown as as pending at the time. But I think that, you know, overall, I think that, you know, it's a it's a fair market price for this piece of property, and I'm okay with it.
Councilmember?
Quick question for the city attorney. Is there anything unethical or questionable about me voting on this issue from your perspective?
Not to my knowledge, but if you want to provide additional information, I could consider it, but I don't know of any.
Okay, there there's really no information to provide.
All right.
I have no pecuniary pecuniary interest in this. I get no financial gain. If this goes through, it just kind of is.
Okay, Councilman Britton?
You know, I've probably shared some of the concerns Councilman Hankins had, but Brian, could you just give us a rundown of the due diligence activities we went through on this property, just to make sure we're getting a fair price on it?
Yes, sir. As part of the due diligence, the city attorney did do an analysis of the properties as far as what their assessed values were and what their appraised values were, their adjusted market values. His analysis came out to right around that fifty thousand dollar range for all three lots. We all, he looked at, you know, other properties within the area and what they, you know, their values were as well. And the property owner accepted our offer.
We still have to get it appraised, right?
We don't have to do it right now. If we ever go for a grand or anything like that, then yes, we would, but not.
But this is fifteen thousand less than the other property we bought and the other property appraised for twice what we bought it for.
Correct.
I think we did it right.
Okay.
You know, and again, and I'm not trying to, what I'm trying to do here is to just make a comparison of what went on in this chamber in November, that in the course of campaigns, things are not always as they look. And I've known Councilwoman Slater for many, many years and I don't think anything is wrong here. What I do think was wrong, what happened in November, because the speaker talked to her about what happened up there and I'm making a point that sometimes everything isn't always what it seems on paper. And I've always said, the five of us up here always have the best intention for everybody, but I thought that, when I saw that, I said, wow, hmm, that happened to us and everybody got all upset about it and now it's happening just a week ago. But, you know, again, I want to reiterate, I don't think anything is wrong here. I, you know, I know how business works and things happen very quickly, but I thought it needed to be pointed out, especially for the, you know, the stuff that the mayor and I had to go through in November, which was exactly the same thing. You know, in campaigns, people give you things and that's how campaigns are. I don't necessarily like it, but, you know, I'd rather us be transparent about it. So everything's fine, but I think it had to be, had to come out.
Okay, thank you. Well, being on the receiving end of that, I do agree with your point. I find it funny that we didn't have a speaker here tonight pointing that out, but c'est la vie, we move on. But it is a very valid point. So, you know, maybe the next time, when, before somebody wants to come up frothing and yelling into the microphone, they get a little bit more information and, you know, find out what's really going on because I don't believe councilmember did anything wrong either. So, and, you know, real estate, you know, I do it, she does it, we hear things, you know. If we can hear something that benefits the city, you know, I don't necessarily think there's anything wrong with bringing it forward, but...
Well, Mr. Mayor, he did actually bring it forward before it went under contract the first time. And I think I brought it up to everybody before it was under contract and it was because he met with the city and was pretty much told that he was going to come up with a lot of obstacles, that he knew that it was a slow motion train wreck and that really the city was about the only person who could, or not person, entity that could make this be used for its highest and best use.
Which is sort of kind of how we ended up with the corner too.
Yeah.
The other side because there wasn't that. You know, we'll leave it at that and, you know, just remind everybody, as Councilmember Hankins said, this is just what happens when campaigns are going on, guys. You know, people will support a candidate for one reason or another and there's nothing nefarious involved. It's just the support of a candidate. So if the listing agent supported the councilmember, well, you know, good for her, she got us support. So that being said, is there anything else? If not, I'm going to call the question. Alrighty, the motion on the table is to adopt resolution thirty-five thirty-three dash eighteen. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Moving along, we're on to our first reading of ordinances. The first one we have tonight is ordinance number, oh, this is telling, it's ordinance, it's number thirteen on our agenda and it's ordinance number sixteen sixty-six. So we'll see how well this one goes.
Mayor, we have two public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed them because I moved ahead. I apologize.
Trying to get out of here, Ron.
I was. Come on, eleven and twelve.
No football games on, what's our hurry?
What's on tonight?
I said, there's no football game.
Yeah, that's true, what's the hurry?
We're going to go through the draw for another six months.
That was one heck of a Super Bowl yesterday, we'll say that. Alright, so here we go, back on track. We're on item number eleven, ordinance number sixteen sixty-one, amendment to the future land use map. Mr. Colbert, I haven't gotten to say that in a while, but can you read this by title only for us, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending ordinance number eight nine six, said ordinance being the comprehensive land planning ordinance as previously amended, providing for amendment to the city of Oviedo comprehensive plan, changing the future land use of approximately seventeen point sixty-five acres located on the south side of Mitchellhamlock Road, east of State Road four twenty-six, from county industrial to city commercial, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing a savings provision, conflict severability, the correction of Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Cobb, enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor. This comprehensive plan amendment involves properties that were annexed into the city back in August of last year. It has gone through the comprehensive plan amendment process. The Land Planning Agency conducted a public hearing and recommended approval. The city council did a public hearing and recommended transmission, middle to the Department of Economic Affairs or Economic Opportunities. And state economic opportunities as well as the other state departments reviewed the amendment and had no concerns. This amendment basically is a change of jurisdiction. It incorporates these properties into the city's future land use map. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number sixteen sixty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present? If they are, do they have anything to add? I don't see them. Alrighty, this is kind of a simple little thing. Alrighty, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address counsel on ordinance number sixteen sixty-one? For those who may not be following exactly what this is, this is the property where Dairy Queen and Mission Barbecue and all of that is. It's, was developed out in the county, it's now annexing into the city. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember?
I move we adopt ordinance number sixteen sixty-one.
We are motion and a second. Councilmember, anything to add?
This is just making the existing buildings that are already there compliant with Oviedo's code. So this was, for people in the audience, there's a lot of new faces out here, this was all built and developed when it was in Seminole County. Then it was annexed into the city and our comprehensive plan and our zoning laws are not perfectly overlapped. All this is, is trying to make this match and bring it under our jurisdiction. So I'm in favor of that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hankins?
No, sir, looks good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilman Pollak?
Looks good.
Alrighty, seeing and hearing no other questions or comments, I'll call the question. Motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number sixteen sixty-one. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Here is the companion to it, ordinance number sixteen sixty-two. Mr. Colbert, can you do us the pleasure, please?
Yes, sir. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Oviedo, Florida. Said amendment, changing the zoning district of approximately eighteen point twenty-eight acres located on the south side of Mitchellhamlock Road, east of State Road four twenty-six, from county industrial and commercial to city commercial, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for a savings provision, conflicts, severability, the correction of Scrivener's errors, providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This request for a zoning map amendment involves the property that you just handled with your comprehensive amendment and it also includes a point six-three acre portion of the Wawa property that wasn't rezoned when that property was initially rezoned. This amendment also is a change of jurisdiction. It incorporates the properties into the city's official zoning map. When you're looking at zoning, the first thing, question you must ask is, is the recommended zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan? In this case, the answer is yes. This zoning, the C two zoning district is a, consistent with the commercial future land use designation that was just now adopted. It's recommended tonight that you conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number sixteen sixty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time the applicant isn't here, so we'll skip over to the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address counsel on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember?
I move we adopt ordinance number sixteen sixty-two.
Second. Motion and a second. Councilmember, anything to add?
No, looks great. Looks consistent.
Councilmember Pollak?
Looks good.
Looks good. Deputy Mayor?
Sir.
Alrighty, as we said, this is just the companion to the last one. All that being said, I'll call the question. Motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Alright, so now we're going to get over to first reading of ordinances and this is, as I mentioned earlier, this is number thirteen on our agenda and it is ordinance number one six six six. So this ought to be fun. Mr. Colbert, can you read this by title only, please?
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, redefining the corporate municipal boundaries, the city limits of the city of Oviedo and amending the city charter of the city of Oviedo in accordance with the provisions of section one sixty-six oh three one Florida statutes and other controlling law, providing for purpose and objections, providing for a revised legal description of the corporate municipal boundaries, city limits of the city of Oviedo, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance that creates the city boundary, the city's corporate limits. The city was incorporated by the state legislature in nineteen sixty-seven. Since that time, the city has conducted annexations where we've annexed properties into the, into the city's corporate limits and we've added, expanded our properties. The thing we haven't done was a comprehensive ordinance that ties all of them together. This ordinance not only ties all the annexations to that original nineteen sixty-seven state act, but it also brings in any, any right of ways that were associated with, with those annexations. It's recommended tonight that the city council read the ordinance by title and then schedule a public hearing for Monday, February nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on ordinance number one six six six.
So moved.
Second.
I wasn't done. I've got a whole thing I have to do.
Oh, sorry.
Scheduled a public hearing on February nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chamber, is four hundred Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, three two seven six five, at approximately six thirty P M.
So moved.
And a second.
Alright, motion second. Anything to add, Mr. Councilmember Pollak, since you were so quick on the draw there?
No, I'm, I'm good with this.
Alrighty. Councilmember Slater?
The city limits look fantastic. They are where they are.
Good. Deputy Mayor?
Good.
Councilmember Hankins?
Good.
Alrighty, hearing and seeing none. Motion on the table is to adopt scheduling the public hearing for February nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, approximately six thirty P M, here at Oviedo City Hall. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to number fourteen. Bear with me. There we go. We're up to item number fourteen, which is ordinance number one six six seven, street lighting assessment district. Mr. Colbert, can you read that by title only for us, please?
Yes, sir. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, creating a special assessment district for the purpose of providing the design permitting, acquisition, construction, and any and all other related or necessary cost and actions that pertain to the street lighting assessments program located within the city limits, providing for legislative findings and intent and adopting an expert's report pertaining thereto, providing for attachments and the incorporation of exhibits, providing for the district to be known as the street lighting assessment program, special assessment district, providing for a short title, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for the properties located within the district, providing for governing of the district by the city council and the city acting as a governing board, providing for formula for special assessments made within the district and assessment methodology relating alternatives, providing for a list of assessments to be made and collected based on application of the assessment formula pertaining to the ownership of the properties benefited and fiscal procedures, providing for a method of collection, providing for other associated related matter and the taking of implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, provisions for codification, the correction of Scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance sixteen sixty-seven provides for the creation of a special assessment, a streetlight special assessment district that would be citywide. It would provide for the leasing, the maintenance, the energy consumption, as well as capital costs that we associated with streetlights within the city. The city has approximately three thousand eight hundred and fifty streetlights within the public right of way that are split between Duke Energy and Florida Power and Light. The, in fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, the city's expense on streetlights was seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Traditionally, the city has paid for this street lighting out of its general fund. In fiscal year eighteen, we did split the cost between the general fund as well as local option gas tax. What the creation of the district will do is to allow us to have a dedicated funding source for street lighting. This is the first step in a number of series of steps that we must take in order to create this district. The adoption of the ordinance will create the district. Later on, we're going to have to have agreements with the county property praiser and tax collector to implement the district. We also have to adopt a rate that's based on a methodology. The most important thing right now is that we must create the district, adoption of this ordinance, prior to March first. That is a statutory requirement. The actual requirement's January first, but if we have agreement from the tax collector and the property praiser, we can have until March first. So that's really our first pending deadline on doing this. This program will allow us, it'll provide for all the, like I said before, the rental, the energy consumption, the maintenance, as well as capital costs. It would also provide for costs to upgrade the streetlights. One of the things we've been talking about is taking our existing streetlights and upgrading them to LED. And so that will not only have, that has a huge benefit, especially from a consumption standpoint. It'll also create a capital improvement source for us to use as well as cover any type of administrative cost. It's recommended tonight that you read the ordinance by title and then schedule a public hearing for February nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on February nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, for ordinance number sixteen sixty-seven, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, four hundred Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, three two seven six five, at approximately six thirty P M.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Councilmember, you have the floor.
Well, you guys know that I was going crazy with the spreadsheet, so I brought my computer. I don't usually have this up here, but there is a spreadsheet that kind of shows what the two proposals are. So for people who are sitting in the audience and don't know what's going on, you kind of heard this, here's my take on it. Right now, we pay for streetlights, which is, you know, part of millage, but we only bring in maybe like twelve million through our property taxes and the other like fourteen million comes from other places. So this isn't, this chart's not totally accurate. But what I was trying to back out of is if we charged millage, what would the millage be that goes toward streetlights? So I don't know if, did any of y'all, maybe this could be a discussion instead of something more formal or is this for a later time to figure out?
Yeah, I think this evening, what we're doing is reading this by title only and setting it up.
It is, but to not talk about some of the details... It is, but to not talk about some of the details upfront, so the public has a chance to chime in, seems like it would be not.
But we don't have all the details yet, because they're still working on one other formula for us to consider.
Yes, or maybe two or three. There's a lot of ways it could go down.
I mean, take your time. I'm not discouraging you from speaking, I'm just saying that it's.
Well, there's some unintended consequences with the two methods that are proposed. On one of them, a person's bill is going from, this is at 652 Pine Avenue, the current bill is 108, going to the acreage method, it goes to 1,900. So that's kind of weird. And I don't know if y'all can see my little, the different colors here, I'll flip it around. There are three different methods shown on this little spreadsheet here, the status quo, or you know, the closest that I could, working with Mr. Boop, our finance director, the closest to status quo I could try to calculate, than option number one and option number two. If we do this based on millage, the state level rule is that we cannot charge more than 10 mils in taxes. So the inspiration for doing this is to shift the way we pay for our streetlights out of millage and to something else. If we change it to something else, we can gauge the cost to be whatever it takes to cover that, even if the other tax rate may, for some reason, need to go above 10 mils. So there's this whole balancing act. Right now, our millage is far below the 10 mil cap, it's somewhere, you know, it's 5.6, 0.5, yeah, it's not that, not that high. But there is a proposition in Tallahassee coming from the state legislature to increase the homestead exemption. If that happens, about $1.1 million less will be coming into the city's bank account. So right now, we're getting about, you know, like 11.6 million. If we get 1.1 less, well, how are we going to pay for streetlights? So it's a very real problem, and this is one of the creative ways that staff has thought of that we can maybe address this. So I'm very, very concerned with the equity of this as we move forward, and I really want to encourage everybody who's tuned into this to look at the different ways, and I appreciate staff taking time with me, starting last Thursday when I was trying to work through this, trying to help me back into what is the status quo, which we haven't quite got, but hopefully by next meeting, we'll get that. And also get some details on what other cities are doing. Winter Springs has a lighting district, Castleberry has a lighting district, and they're working on.
Orange County, Seminole County.
Yeah, a lot of people have lighting districts, and it'd be interesting to find out, how have they structured them? Is it based on the lot size? The two methods proposed by our consultants are lot size, 0.26 acres, or the size of the home on it, or not necessarily home, but the structure, 21, 25 square feet. Another way that could be done is, you know, how much street frontage do you have? Because presumably, the more street frontage you have, the more lights you have.
You forgot the EBU, just flat rate.
Yeah, yeah, and another way that they proposed was, well, you're one taxpaying entity, you just pay one share. So that would have people living in, say you've got the new tiny house there on 426, and then you've got the mall, well, the mall would pay the same thing as the tiny house. Well, that doesn't feel fair. So I keep looking at these different things and thinking, you know, how is it going to impact different sizes and different neighborhoods? And then you've got the different lights, some places, like my neighborhood, it's got wooden poles, and it's got a little light sticking off the side. And then there's other neighborhoods that have really fancy poles, and that are rented. So there's just a lot of, a lot of jumbled stuff going on, and just encourage everybody, let's get a lot of info and base it on that, and think it all through.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Bob, you second, right?
No.
Louis second. Counselor, deputy mayor, excuse me, thank you.
Well, that's really the crux of it, it's a balancing act. But this is kind of a trend that's been going on for a long time. I think we started with stormwater back in the 90s, and we've been looking at other things. Brian helped me out here, our, I believe, our water and wastewater programs, our enterprise funds.
Yes, sir.
Stormwater fund, there's probably others. In my mind, I'll go back to the, our water rates. We set those and paid for them out of the general fund up until the mid 2000s, and when we went and studied it, we found out we've been subsidizing that for many, many years. So by creating the enterprise funds, we can keep track of exactly what our water system costs and charge appropriate rates. I think this is something very similar. I don't know how far back we can go, but I'd like to know what our light bill, our streetlight bill was back in the 90s, and how we've tracked how it's grown since then. I don't think there's a way to do that. This will give us that insight and that information. Yeah, we could just raise the millage rate, but the trend in Tallahassee is, I think, to try to force us to raise that millage rate, for whatever reason, so that maybe they can lower their revenue streams. To me, it's just a way of tracking it. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. Brian, are there any neighborhoods in the city that don't have streetlights?
We have some holes, yes, sir, that don't have streetlights, that do need them.
Okay.
The best example is East Mitchell Heimlich Road. We have an area there that doesn't.
Well, I'm thinking more of residential neighborhoods, but this would allow us to dedicate funds to provide those, fill those gaps.
We can build in a capital component into it.
Rather, I doubt seriously if we would find money in the general fund in the next couple of years to make those capital improvements. So this is just one way of tracking what we do, just like we do with a lot of other of our services, so. More to follow, I guess, right?
Sounds that way. Counselor Henkin?
Just scheduling the public hearing tonight, right?
That's it.
That's it. But I'll keep in mind, I'll see you two weeks.
Alright, well, I mean, Bob, did I go to you yet?
Not yet.
You're up.
No, I'm on board with the equality amongst the different groups, because there's some areas that have, you know, large square footage buildings, but not necessarily use that many streetlights, and then you have neighborhoods that use a lot of streetlights. So trying to find that balance is key to making this right. We've gone over a couple of different methodologies, and they're going to bring us some more, and we'll continue to review it, just to make sure that no, no one group is, you know, carrying the burden of this. So we'll, you know, make sure that it's very equitable with the amount of usage, you know, amount of streetlight usage that the different buildings or individuals have. So I'm good with continuing on with this process.
Alright, thank you, Bob. I'll just add my two cents, and then I'll go back up and down the dais and get final thoughts. The, you know, the point that's been made is that obviously, this will be a dedicated funding source just for streetlights, just like we do for water, just like we do for stormwater, and many other items. And, you know, many years ago, the city wasn't run that way. I mean, folks forget, or didn't know, or didn't realize, because, you know, government just does what government does, we used to put all of the funds, and Mr. Cobb, you'll remember this, and I'm sure Mr. Colbert will remember this, he used to all just go into one big giant kitty general fund, including the water. When you guys used to pay your water bill, it used to just go into this big fund, general fund, and then everything was just paid out of general funds. Back in 1990s, the stormwater was started. That was the first real enterprise fund that the city had, that and garbage, because garbage has always been on the water bill. Then, in 2003, is really when we set up all the different enterprise funds around the city that we have now. So water and sewer is the biggest one. When you pay your water and sewer bill, unbeknownst to most, that does not come into the general fund. That goes into a separate account that's only used to run the water plant, the sewer plant, the equipment to manage it all, the lift stations, that's all that money gets used for. Same thing with the stormwater. When you pay that stormwater bill, it goes through all stormwater needs. When you have a lighting district, which many municipalities have, this isn't something new, we have a dedicated funding source for all of the streetlights. And then with, today, we do get a lot of requests, you know, for areas that have missing streetlights. Mitchell Heimlich Road is a big one. You know, there's spots in Mitchell Heimlich Road that do not have streetlights, but you go down by the west Mitchell Heimlich Ale House side, it's dark, there's no streetlights. You go east, Mitchell Heimlich, there's no streetlights. So there's areas in the city where we are missing lighting that this will allow us to do. With the budgets the way they are, and our millage rate as low as it is, most folks, you know, we have the third lowest millage rate in Seminole County. We are actually, I mean, technically, we're number two, but Mayor Lacy in Winter Springs and I can argue that back and forth 100 different ways, but, you know, we give exceptional value for the dollar. Unfortunately, what's starting to happen now is that we're using, as Mr. Cobb said, we're using money from our gas tax for the streetlights. Now, what's that taking away from? That's taking away from road improvements. That's taking away from repaving specifically, right Bobby? So, you know, that's coming out of our repaving program to the tune of about $576,000 this year. The lights, they run about $730,000 a year to have streetlights in the city of Oviedo. Most of them, we lease, as Mr. Cobb said, let's say 99% of them, we lease.
Yes, sir.
Oviedo Boulevard, I think we may own and.
Oviedo Boulevard, and actually, we own Franklin Street.
Franklin Street.
We do lease Oviedo Boulevard.
Okay, well, I know we own one of the roads, and, you know, that was also something I know staff was looking at, you know, whether it would be cheaper if we just owned all the lights rather than leased all the lights, but I don't think that that math worked, but we'll wait and see. It's one of the things they're looking at. Changing everything over to LED, changing out poles that are in the older neighborhoods would all come about, not necessarily by doing this, just depends on what the final answer is that we get from Duke or not, but we'll be able to get LED in all the neighborhoods. We'll be able to get a lot of these poles. We're still working on that one way or another, separate of this, but it would be nice to get poles replaced, Alafoya Woods, Riverside, Twin Rivers, the north end of town. You know, the north end of town, as Megan pointed out, a lot of them are just screwed on to the telephone poles, and it works, it functions, but those fixtures are probably, who knows how old they are.
I don't want any more streetlights near my house. Y'all, just get it.
Actually, we're putting a spotlight on your house, but don't worry. It's in, you didn't see it on page 36. Lake Charm, Elvis House, we're going to put a big light on it. But anyway, I mean, you all get my point. So we're at the very early stages of this. This is, the methodology is going to be very important, you know, how we make it equitable, because it needs to be equitable. But in this conversation tonight, Mr. Cobb, I thought of something that I didn't ask you when we were speaking about this. There are some costs involved when we do it on the tax bill, because of the reporting that we have to do to the tax collector, correct?
I believe there are, yes. Actually, Mr. Boop may know more than I do on it.
And is this something that we could do on the water bill?
It is, the assessment, yes, we can.
Would that eliminate the need for those, I mean, I realize it's not a huge fee, but it's, you know, 3% or 4% of the budget each year.
I think it's something we should, when we narrow in on the methodology, I think that should be part of the discussion that we have, as to whether or not we do it through the water bill, or we do it through our tax function.
Without giving me an answer this evening, maybe it's just, it's something I'd be curious, you know, and I don't think anyone up here would object to know, would you?
No, I'd like to know.
Alright, just, let's see. Because we run the stormwater, you know, we could just, you know, one EBU, I mean, the way it's all broken down now is about $6.34 a month, it says here, so, I mean, if that's something that can go on the water bill, and we don't have.
How does that impact whether, you know, for a normal property, if you don't pay your property taxes, there's a tax deed, you know, tax lien goes on and stuff like that. If you don't pay this, like, will your water be cut? Like, I'm just curious how that would.
Well, it would be on the water bill, and it would work the same way now. If you don't pay your water bill after 90 days, there's a lien on the property.
So nobody's water would be cut if they were to not pay their lighting? Because it's a little bit of a different thing, it's not a fee, this would be, it's just a little bit different, it's classified differently.
What's the garbage on our bill?
Yeah, what happens if they don't pay, what are you saying, if someone wants to protest and not pay their garbage bill? It's on the water.
Yeah, what does happen? I don't know.
We don't, we don't cut the water off.
You don't cut the water? Okay.
No.
Good.
There you go. Alrighty, I mean, just.
We'll look into that.
I'm just curious, I mean, it might not be something that can be done, I don't know, but if it eliminates all of.
Well, you know, it's one of the things we have to enter into a near local agreement with the tax collector, so I'm sure that would be defined as part of that agreement, if there were any.
Right, none of that may be necessary, if we can just do it as same type of stormwater fund that we have, and, you know, that might be able to lower the fee. However we break these EBUs up, I mean, that's, as everybody has said up here, that's going to be the struggle, but we'll have to wait and see. But alright, I'll go up and down the dais one last time, I'll start, the council member, and I'm just going to go down to the left. Anything?
Good.
You're good? Bob?
Good for now.
Steve?
Good for now.
Deputy Mayor? You're good? Alrighty, so the motion on the table is to schedule the public hearing for February 19, 2017, here at Oviedo City Hall, at approximately 6:30 p.m. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to resolutions, we have none, no discussion items. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
I have no report, Mayor.
Alrighty. Mr. Colbert, welcome back.
Thank you, it's good to be here.
Mr. Krutz on the west coast, I hear.
He is, he's over there for a week or so.
Well, good for him, good for him. Do you have anything to add tonight, sir?
Not tonight, thank you.
Alrighty, great to see you. Counselor member Henkin, you're up first.
Let's keep it going, no report.
Alrighty. Counselor member Sladek?
I'll try to do a short one. With a new road reconfiguration and a missing stoplight, it is hard if a person is coming from the library area, around the roundabout, and heading towards Ace, you cannot turn right. And I think people are getting super confused. It might be helpful if we could work with FDOT, or I don't know if this is within our own jurisdiction, to put a little note to say, if you want to go to 434, turn on Franklin Street. If you want to go to 419, go here. And if somebody comes all the way to 434 and then says, I want to go to Ace, help them understand how to get there, because people are cutting through businesses' parking lots, and that's messed up their pavement, it's kind of a raw deal for those people. I know Citizens Bank's getting it pretty bad, as is, you know, the little gas station there. Is that something we could, we could do?
I don't know if I'd speak, but I'm, you know, I'm one of those frustrated that almost area, but I was just wondering, did that probably not see this coming?
Well, I think it's just the signage has to be figured out. The end project, that's never going to connect again. So 426, when it comes down, it's going to swoop through, like, kind of the middle of where Sod King is, and it's going to deadend almost into, kind of like where the water tower is. So it's just getting us ready for a permanent pattern change, but, you know, it's taken some getting used to. And just a little reminder sign before people stack up there, we have 20 people sitting there being super annoyed, and people can't get into Ace, can't get into my Oviedo store, and all the businesses down there. It makes it tough for everybody, so is that.
Bobby, can you talk to the DOT, see if we can get some directional signage? Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And this last Friday, I got to go on a really interesting food system tour. Lee Ann Tepper from the Townhouse came as well, and we were talking about what it would take to get composting to happen at a commercial level in Oviedo. So if you guys are okay with me exploring that a little bit, I would like to reach out to some of the commercial waste haulers in our area, and see if any of them are set up for this, talk with a few more restaurants. I talked to one at Oviedo on the park, who said, no problem, we'd love to do that, and it kills us to throw all this away. Putting the organic material, all the wasted food into the landfill, either way, it's going to biodegrade, one's going to go to methane, one's going to go to CO2. Methane is 25 times worse for the environment. So even though they're trying to catch it all at the landfill, first off, we're running out of space at our landfill. And second off, if we're not catching 95% of it, we are way worse off sending that to the landfill. In the city of Orlando, they started this sort of a program, and were able to decrease their tipping fees, because so many restaurants chose to participate. their tipping fees, because so many restaurants chose to participate, and so much of that waste was redirected. So, if people get on board with that concept here, and we can maybe find a little space, I don't know how we'd do this. We'd have to find space somewhere at Oviedo on the Park so everybody could take their compost, if they're willing, of course.
Come on. Mr. Cobb, does Seminole County offer composting through the...
No, no, they send it to a biofuel place in Orlando. So, they're not composting it. They're just taking the organic waste, removing it from the waste stream, and putting it someplace else where they get paid to make biofuel. So, they send less, the city's sending less to the landfill, so they're saving money there. They're making a few bucks getting it to the biodiesel place. All the restaurants are happy to do it, and it doesn't cost the taxpayers a dime. Might save them something. Well, and in this case, it would be all, you know, the commercial people have their own commercial arrangements as it is. But if you guys are okay with me exploring that, I would love to see if there is any independent interest on this.
Guys?
My issue with it is the actual odor involved in the compost and putting, and our beautiful Oviedo on the Park over here having biodegrading food.
No, no, it wouldn't be biodegrading food at Oviedo on the Park. They pick it up every day.
I've...
And there's trash. They are throwing the trash out anyway, and it is sitting behind the restaurants anyway. So, this would be an alternative to it sitting in the dumpsters anyway.
Well, where's it going? Where's it going from there?
To a biodiesel place. So, as a truck that is equipped with whatever the equipment is, I've heard it's like a bioscraper, I'm just learning more about this, would pick up this at least as regularly as it's picked up out of the dumpsters, and scoot it to someplace besides a landfill to do something more productive than turn into whatever happens to that in the landfill.
But why do we have to get involved? Isn't that free market and free enterprise? Isn't that available already?
To an extent, but I would appreciate your blessing to explore how we might be able to get everybody kinda working together. And in the past, I have tried to do things independently, and you guys have said, "Well, you're tinkering in things that could be related." So, we have a list of approved vendors. I would like to reach out to said approved vendors, and reach out to different restaurants.
Isn't it similar to what they were doing with the cooking oils? When they were trying to go around, there was people going around and they were collecting them?
Yeah.
To make biofuel out of that. But, so, you know, I think that this is...
Yeah, that's right.
But I think this is just a third, a third party wanting, you know, if a third party comes to the different vendors and says, "Hey, put this trash can in at your facility and put all your food in, and we'll come pick it up," I don't think there's an issue with that, but I don't think we should set a whole section of Oviedo on the Park for everybody to then transport all their trash.
Oh, no, the restaurants wouldn't do it if that were the situation. But to have a communal place that is, you know, between Marlowe's and Maple Street, for example, say, you know, "Here's a spot where we will allow it to be, and we're not gonna hassle you for having your dumpster someplace where it wasn't approved." So, there may just be some regulatory flexibility needed along the way, to make something like this come to fruition.
I mean, can it be a, like, if there's an area where there's two dumpsters, you have your...
Well, if you can fit another dumpster in there, that's great, but if you can't fit another dumpster, it would have to go somewhere else.
It's like a recycling dumpster. It would just be a different, I mean, it would be like a recycling dumpster.
We gotta design review on that.
But, I mean, I'm not here to...
If you're not opposed to the idea, I don't wanna go around pretending that I'm not on council as I talk to different restaurants and say, "Hey, here's this idea. Are you interested in having more information?"
I don't see any consensus. Sorry.
All right, well, I guess we will not pursue composting or biofuel.
Can I say something?
Sure.
About this? You know, everyone knows I watch golf and play golf. They had a tournament in Phoenix this weekend where somewhere around eight-hundred thousand people showed up. Turns out, the sponsor was the company Waste Management, and they did a, they did a presentation during the tournament that that tournament is one-hundred percent waste-free. Not a single thing is sent to the dump. And part of that is composting. And I think I heard them say that the composting goes back to the golf course for fertilizer. But, I guess my point is, there is a commercial entity out there that's approaching this, and if you wanna talk to one of the trash companies, Republic or Waste Management, and see what they're doing, and what the concept is, I don't really see anything wrong with the feasibility study, but, you know, there's all kinds of other concerns, and there's other things that maybe it's not feasible for the city to be involved. It might be a regional thing. Make the trash companies look all over at various cities and do what they do with it. Because they're the ones that are equipped to do it.
Okay, so, is the consensus that I may or may not speak to trash companies as Megan an individual? I'm just making sure that nobody will upset me if I do that.
No one says you can't represent Megan as an individual.
Okay, because in the past, okay, in the past, you guys have expressed a concern about me being me as an individual.
You know, just for me, Councilman Britton, he took the words right out of my mouth. I mean, we, and I think the mayor was trying to hit on it. You know, it's a great idea, but I'm not sure that we're geared up to do it. You know, somebody approached us many years ago, and Brian, I don't know if you were here, I know Dominic was here, and they actually had oil that was made from a byproduct of cattle, you know, when they came out of, you know, from making steaks or whatever, not the boy, but they took the old parts and they made it into oil. And it was a product, and it was motor oil. And we were approached by it. Mayor and I said, "That sounds like a great idea." We put it and blew up like three cars. Didn't work.
It didn't work.
But we did try. But, but, but...
Chain source, I think it blew up... The engine's burned up, yeah.
The engine's burned up, so it didn't work as good as, you know, Pennzoil or Quaker State, but, anyway, but I would agree that this is a great idea, but, you know, go talk to Republican Waste Management, see what they got going on, and just tell them to, but we can't do it all, you know? It's like when they try to get, you know, cities to do cable companies, you know, it's a great concept, the Wi-Fi, and you find out, you know, it's not easy to be an expert in everything, you know? But I think that, as Councilman Britton said, I did see that that was sponsored by Waste Management. I was watching some of that, and go talk to them, see if you can get it going, you know? What are you doing with our trash? You know? Can we get some, you know, some stuff from you that you'll take it and go do some good stuff with it?
We can't even get recycling into schools.
Yeah.
So, I would think that the company out there offering this service, I just, there's money to be made, someone's doing it.
Well, they're doing it in Orlando, so as long as you guys don't mind me attempting to entice somebody to come here and do something that's not currently done.
You can represent yourself all you want, it's just, don't go and say the city council is interested in doing this, or whatever. Come back to us and find out what you find out.
Well, here's something that I hope the city council will consider being interested in. Making it such that people are not automatically offered a straw. Somebody sent that idea to me the other day, and I thought it seemed very fascinating. You go into a restaurant, you get your cup, and a lot of times, they just throw down a straw, and it seemed that everybody wants it. So, I sometimes use a straw, even though I don't really want it, but some jurisdictions have shuffled that around, and saying, "Of course, you can have a straw if you like it, but we're not gonna just volunteer it."
Are you sure you don't live in California?
Yeah, I think they're doing that in California.
In California, they're...
Born and raised in Oviedo.
For it. I think we'll let people make a personal decision on their straws.
All right. Thought it's worth a shot. So, anybody out there who wants to not use straws, be sure you give them back before they hand them to you, because once it hits the table, I've been told they can't take it back. All right, that's it. It was longer than I meant for it to be.
Keith, you're up.
Okay, I guess got one item I wanna talk about, and that's the senior committee. We're gonna meet, we met a few weeks ago. The first meeting, we had four or five people there. The meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, we had maybe fifteen or so there, and we put the word out to say, "You fifteen, go get another two or three people that are there," and we're expecting more people at our meeting next Monday, which is Monday week from today at six o'clock. What we left with at the last meeting was to gauge interest in a bowling league. We have a friend from church, from my church is willing to set it up, and I think he's already made the arrangements, it's just a matter of gauging the interest.
Yeah, he did. He teach me how to play golf, and I'll teach him how to bowl.
Okay. I met with a fellow at one of the chamber functions who is in an Oviedo tennis league, and I think they're gonna disband that, and he expressed kind of an interest in setting up a senior tennis league, so we got that going. And then, I'll speak to Nick at Twin Rivers, there used to be a senior golf league out there, and see what it would take to reengage that. Seminole State has contacted me, Mr. Gibbs, I believe his name is, is the dean of the Oviedo campus. He's gonna come to the meeting Monday and offer their support, and see what they can do as far as, maybe not permanent facilities, but temporary use of facilities as available.
And he lives right here in Oviedo.
Does he?
Lives at Oviedo on the Park.
Oh, okay. And then, Tim Matthews from Life at UCF, that's a learning institute for elders at UCF, came and spoke. That's kind of a crowded organization, but he offered to at least feed us events that are going on at UCF, and maybe we can hook into that and get some discounts on whether some of the events they've got going on. So, a lot going on with that. We've got a meeting coming up Monday. Anyone who wants to attend is welcome. I think we decided fifty and over was eligible. I don't know who, I guess that's for the Life at UCF, fifty and over is eligible, so okay, that's good enough for us. But it's going along, I think the end game will be sometime in April. Patrick, and we'll maybe have a community event, or we'll wrap up and consolidate what we've got, and make a presentation with some recommendations, so...
Thank you. I'll be brief. I wanna address the downtown, because obviously, the construction came up, and I'd just like to remind everybody who was here, when we did the parallel pairs way back in two thousand two or three, it just took getting, a lot of getting used to. You know, it was completely different, you know, we had one-way streets going both ways, and I remember, you know, getting emails and comments like yours, sir, and I understand that it's frustrating to you, you know, that it was never gonna work, and then once everybody got used to it, it actually worked pretty well up until about four or five years ago, and the intersection just can't take it anymore. I think what most folks need to realize is that there, there's been dozens of public hearings on these improvements going on in the downtown. This wasn't something that was just dreamt up, you know, a few years back. This started with PD and E studies back in two thousand three and four, and there have been multiple meetings, public meetings held everywhere for input from everybody. They used to hold them at the Baptist Church, if I remember. There are a few held there, there were some held here, so it isn't new. But, that being said, what's eventually going to end up happening is there will be another connector road going through behind the repair shop on the corner there. What's that called? Superior, I think? Right, Superior? There's gonna be another connector road. And that connector road is actually gonna go through the Evans property, connect up, go through the old gas station where the Finn and the Feather, I think, used to be, and connect up to Geneva. Now, that would have been done with this phase. It was part of this phase to be done. The property owner, as is his right, decided, he didn't like the way the county and the city had to do the due diligence on his property, and asked them to leave. That was about, what Bobby, about seven years ago? Yeah. So, we were unable to acquire the land, or else it would have been purchased already and done. I do believe there was a meeting with some involved in the project last week, was it, Bobby? Or, right? Didn't you meet with some county folks?
We met with county commissioner Laurie last week.
Right, okay. I know the county commissioner's involved, I know the majority landowners down there are involved, and everyone's trying to acquire this parcel. Because once that parcel is acquired, the road will go back through. So, what'll happen is you'll be coming down Geneva, it'll curve over, or you'll be able to go straight and get on to 426. Now, let me give you the big picture of what's gonna happen. There's gonna be a long turn lane where all those barrels are right now. So, folks coming from the east, you know, who used to have just one stacking lane to make a left to head south on 434, it'll now stack cars past railroad and station. So, the intersection is actually gonna flow. Folks coming down from 426 will just, you know, merge in. Now, Chief, there have been complaints about, you know, the cars that are out there in front of that, the gas station, so, I know I mentioned it to Mr. Cobb, I think, and maybe we need to take a peek at that. I also mentioned it to the property owner, and the property owner has been talking with his tenant, so they're trying to address that issue right now.
That is real...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I came, I hear you, sir. I came through it the other day off the traffic circle, and just as I was going through it, I called Mr. Cobb, so, and I don't live up there, but I've seen people concerned about it, and I actually went out of my way to come down that way so I could see it, and yes, that is being addressed. But there will be another connector road. It will eventually be four lanes all the way through, which will change it again, because once it, once it becomes four lanes all the way through, then 426 isn't gonna connect up to 419. You're gonna come down 426, you'll go down that little connector road through the old gas station to get to 426. But 426 is just gonna come down and swoop over up railroad on that side of station.
Yes, sir, it'll connect over to Railroad Street, it'll take you to 434.
It'll kinda just swoop over and connect up to 434. So, I know it's frustrating, construction is terrible, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to interject. I don't think the problem is a second or fourth thought of foresight on what's happening. I think the problem exists that people who don't normally drive through our city...
Are confused, right.
Yeah, and Google Maps can't keep up. It's that, my own father, who's eighty years old, I'm having to try to tell him how to get over to Lockwood and from my parking lot. It's that part, I think that is, if there were just some signage telling people, "Hey, if you wanna try to get to 426," instead of people driving by, hitting the brakes, "I was supposed to turn there, but now I can't turn there," I see it all the time. So, I think that, I love the way the road is flowing, the traffic is flowing through there. I think just signage helping people who don't drive through there today is what is needed.
And Mr. Wyatt's gonna check into that, and that may actually be part of the contract, but, you know, you gotta remember, as you and I have discussed, I mean, this isn't per se a city project.
I know.
You know, it's a state and county project by a contractor who Bobby's on their Christmas card list, so...
I wouldn't be on their Christmas card list.
Bobby is not on their Christmas card list.
I probably wouldn't be either, because it's very frustrating, and I appreciate you helping us, I do.
Bobby, you can look into that for us, correct?
Actually, Mayor, when the councilwoman contacted us about it, we started looking into it already, about how we could try to capture people at the roundabout, and try to direct the flow, you know, away from the Geneva-419 intersection, to get them to going in different pathways. I actually had a gentleman one day sitting on Geneva, called me from his car, and then when I answered, he was, he was very quiet, because he was shocked that I actually answered the phone. And we talked for a few minutes, and I told him, I said, "Yes," I said, "I normally take Franklin Street." And he said, "I never thought about that."
All right, so, let's make it easier for everybody, so they'll get used to that new traffic pattern as quickly as we can, because I can agree, I mean, if you're coming from out of the area, you're not gonna be familiar, and those of us in the area, it's just learning.
Yeah, I know, the site locations, it's not that mattered, so it's not something we, you know, I just won't take it with me.
Right, okay. I just wanted to get the history on it, that's all. That's the end of my report. of my report. Councilman Pollock, you're up.
All right. Um, I had a, a different item that we, to talk about tonight, and I was going to try to see if there was any kind of consensus on it.
That's unusual, because usually the person who goes number five, there's nothing left.
Um, this one's on the Cultural Center at Oviedo on the Park. I've had a couple, I've had some people approach me about the, the catering services there, that there, there's, there's a select few caterers there, and I don't understand why we can't. If we, if we have a, if we have a set contract, you know, anybody can go cater there as long as they will agree to sign the contract and agree to our terms for that part. Also, the Cultural Center, just the, the fees in general, maybe we need to take a look at those a little bit more, see if we can get some more use out of the facility from, from paying customers. I, I kind of did a little bit of an analysis on it, and, and it's, it's not being, to me, it doesn't seem like it's being utilized much at all. And then the last item I had on it is if somebody comes to rent the entire park, I feel like the parking lot should be included in that entire park rental. So, different things like that I would like to, to put as a, a discussion item on a future agenda if there's any kind of consensus for it.
Is there consensus, guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Cobb, can you pick an agenda that might be a little lighter one evening to add that to?
Actually, Mayor, what I would suggest is that when we do our first budget workshop of the year, that we do it then, because we're really talking about something that's part of the budgetary process, and it would be a good, I think it would be a good discussion item during that work session.
In the interim, maybe work with Councilmember Pollock on. Drew, you know, it would be helpful if we can get a schedule and see how much is actually being rented. You know, the, the fee schedule for it, I know it's in the budget book, but it'd just be easier to put a, pack it together in the interim, so we can just see. See how, how much it's booked. I mean, I seem to see events going on inside, I just don't know how many.
Yeah, a lot of those, from what I can see, are like HOA meetings, or, or, you know, kind of lower, you know, meetings that are either free or, or we don't collect much rent for. I'm, I'm trying to look for, for events that we would be able to collect more rent for, and maybe if we lowered, there, there's a, there's an equilibrium point where if we lower the price a little bit, we might be able to get more usage, and we might be actually be able to generate more revenue in the long run out of the facility. So, I mean, I, it's not...
Sounds good.
Yeah, so we can, we can have this discussion later, so.
Have you sat, Mr. Cobb, about, and maybe with Drew in the interim, and look over the different contracts with the vendors? I seem to remember Mr. Groot was involved in that, too. There, there's, there's a reason.
Oh, we, we did a formal RFQ, that's what we did. And we put down specific criteria for each, each vendor to, to comply with. And then out of that RFQ, I believe it was, I think we have like eight vendors that qualified under the RFQ. And so those are the vendors that we entered into contracts with. We, it's our basic standard contract. We have three-year, it's a three-year contract with the ability to renew for two additional years. So at most, a total of five. And so that, I mean, that's what we did. We went through a procurement process to bring in specific vendors that could meet the criteria that we were looking for.
But, but from what I understand, the, the, all the, the vendors that qualified were accepted, correct?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay. Um, but, but is there anything in the contracts that you know of, and, and maybe you can't answer this right now, but that would prevent us from adding additional vendors? Is there...
That part I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to go through the contract and see if there's a way to add additional vendors. I don't know if there is or not. Most of the time, if you just look at the basic procurement process, since they went through the, the existing vendors, had to go through a competitive process in order to receive the contract, then you would almost have to say that we would need to have everyone go through that same competitive process.
But it was an RFQ, not an RFP?
It was an RFQ, yes.
Okay. Um, all right, so we'll, we'll work on that some more. And then the, just, I just want to, you know, give Drew's team, you know, accolades for the Wellness Event that was on Saturday. That was a great event, and a lot of people were out there. I always constantly try to chase Chief White, but I can never catch him. So, one of these days, I'll be there, so.
How about your son? Your son was like flying.
Yeah, he did it in 2630. It was his time, so he's getting there. 10 years old.
He flew past me on the return.
Mm-hmm. So I just tell him I'll meet him at the finish line, so.
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's all.
All right. Quick thing to say. Sure, of course.
Mr. Cobb, where are we at with Al Qaeda and FEMA? Do we have them on board? Did we talk to them about our FEMA stuff? I know we had consensus to fly. Are they doing anything yet? Because when you brought budget up, it just hit me in the head, you know, budget.
We, we have a draft work order that we're, we're going to be sending up to them to take a look at, and I want to take a look at it as well, and so...
Yeah, just write right on the top, "We need that $1 million FEMA priority," and then write it like 100 times.
We've got a number of things for them to work on.
Yeah, I know, you got a few things. Okay, so that's what works. Thanks.
Anything else with the good of the order? Hearing non-future meeting dates, these are all 6:30 PM. They're all right here in the Oviedo City Council chambers. We have February 19, March 5, March 19. There is no meeting. That is spring break week, April 2, and April 16, all at 6:30 PM. With that being said, it's just about 8:10. We're adjourned.